A lot of money to make this happen, so I want to thank you guys. Good job and move forward with that. And also, I believe this Saturday, September 20th, Walnut Creek Nature Park, we're going to have a community input. So we want to get everybody out there to give any input they want to make changes to the Walnut Creek Park and make improvements there. So hopefully, all of you could participate in that. And also, our local Assemblyman Roger Hernandez has a number of events coming up on Saturday, September 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Northview Intermediate School. He will be hosting a, in the City of Doherty, the Doherty Health and Wellness Expo in collaboration with the League of United Latin American Citizens, so hopefully, which is LULAC. Hope you could attend that. Also, he will be sponsoring the 8th Annual College Fair this year. That'll be held Saturday, September 27th, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Cerro Vista High School here on Fraser Streets. Hopefully, you could remember those dates. Those are all on our websites, or should be on our websites, hopefully, and we could attend those, right? So, thank you, Mayor. Oh, one more item. The Ballpark Soccer League is also having an annual inauguration and trophy award ceremony. They've invited all elected officials in the community to participate. It will be held October 5th at 8:30 a.m. at the Ballpark High School. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. At this point, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Thank you. There's one other important event that's happening, which is tomorrow night, Thursday, at 7:00 o'clock at St. John the Baptist Parish Hall. It is a forum for AB-60, which is the new law, the new bill, that will allow undocumented people to drive with the, apply for a driver's license as of January of 2015. It's going to be a community event, which will also include many of our religious leaders, as well as our city council. We have, it's being cosponsored by Dr. Ed Hernandez, Senator Ed Hernandez, as well as an organization out of Baldwin Park that does a lot of activism with different causes. Our chief is, will be there. He's part of the panel. We have a representative from the Department of Motor Vehicle. We have a representative from the Mexican consulate, the Guatemalan consulate. Please come if you know someone, or you would like to get information in regards to AB-60, which will be available January of next year. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. I will not be able to attend tomorrow because of conflicts in schedule, but I think it's an opportunity, of course, to really, hopefully, bring a lot of residents out to that and get that driver's license come 2015. So it's very important, and hopefully, maybe we place that up on our marquee as well, just to let people know that that's transpiring. Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Mayor, I just want to clarify. I'm sorry, I did say, I said Mr. Webb, but I don't think I gave you the full name. His name is Ralph Webb, and he left 1989.
Okay, I've heard of the name, but never had an opportunity to meet the person. Thank you very much for bringing that up. It's very important, someone that was part of the city hall as well. At this point, Madam City Clerk will be taking roll call. Am I correct?
City Treasurer.
City Treasurer, thank you.
First, I would like to welcome our Planning Commissioner, David Muse, our Laborian, Mr. Gonzalez, and Mrs. Skip. Amanda Serrato, sorry. I'm getting senior moment. Anyway, good evening, everyone. Buenos dias a todos, and welcome to our meeting today. Councilmember Cruzbaca?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Susan Nan?
Present.
Mayor Pataim Ricardo Bacheko?
Here.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk.
On Hawaiian mode, I'm sorry.
Treasurer, thank you for speaking, Lady Council, Maria Contreras. All right, thank you. All right, so at this point, we have several presentations, so the first one that we have here will be the certificate presentation to winners and volunteers of the Clean Cart Challenge Waste Management Program, Terry Muse. Where's Terry Muse? Hey, Terry, how you doing?
Great.
Where's the husband? Oh, Commissioner, okay. Hey, what's up, David? All right, buddy. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and community members. Waste Management's very excited to share with you tonight the results of the Summer 2014 Baldwin Park Clean Cart Challenge. But before I do that, I'd like to introduce to you two new employees in my department, who you will be seeing a lot more of in the community. First, we have Anthony Fernandez.
Good evening. Good evening.
Stand up. Put around and face the audience, they can see you too. Anthony is a Diamond Bar native. He's currently attending University of Laverne, and he will be doing education and outreach, and a lot of the public education, and he is bilingual. Next, we have Kenneth Furlough.
All right, Ken.
Kenneth is a Pico Rivera resident, father of five. He has extensive knowledge in recycling. He helps set up programs in the City of LA and LA Unified. So he's working with the Baldwin Park Rack, the Recycling Ambassadors, and they've already started hitting the streets this week, talking to businesses about the new commercial recycling program. So you'll definitely be seeing him and the rest of them around the city. So now, let's go to the Clean Cart Challenge. You might recall, last November, we did a pilot program with Baldwin Park High School for America Recycles Month, and it really was successful. The students really got into it. They really loved helping turn Baldwin Park green, and it gave us some good baseline information about recycling habits in Baldwin Park. So the city and Waste Management applied for a Think Green grant from Keep America Beautiful, and the city received a $4,000 grant to expand the program. So over the summer, we worked with Vanessa Carvajal and Juan from the Teen Center. The Teen Center recruited a number of students who actually went out for two months, every Friday, and they went out and did cart checks. They actually looked inside the recycle carts, and actually to see if there was proper recyclable items in there. The Teen Center provides snacks, drinks, keep them energized, hydrated. They had their yellow safety vest, their gloves, their clipboards, and they marched into the streets of Baldwin Park. We actually selected the area of Arrow Highway, Olive, Bleecker, and Main. That was the area that our drivers identified as the best area of opportunity, that either residents were not participating in recycling, or they were contaminating recycle bins. So that's the area that we concentrated on. So basically, what we did was, we went out to each resident three times. The first time, the students went out, they gave them an information tag, telling them they're going to be coming out the next week to check their recycle cart, kind of giving them a heads up and a, you know, where you'd kind of, you know, maybe give a little extra effort, told them what's recyclable, and actually did a tag also for the bulky item program, to remind them about that program. The next week, they went out again and checked to see if the cart was out, and if it was clean of, you know, full of clean recyclables. And then they went back about three weeks later, without any warning, and just to check to see if they were still recycling. So what we found out was, we kept data on a spreadsheet and found out, well, we did 378 homes, first of all, is how many homes were visited. 68% of the residents are participating in the recycling program, but of the 68%, 37% of those are either, are contaminating their recycle bins. You can see there's a lot of room for education, that people are trying, but unfortunately, lots of times, they're putting things in the recycle bin that's trash, diapers, green waste, things that aren't recyclable. So there's a lot of area of opportunity, and it really shed a lot of light on what we need to do. We need to do a lot more education. So we're hoping to continue this to other parts of the city in the future. We're also launching a new program at the street fair this Thursday. We're going to work with the students again to do a program called Caught Greenhanded. And what we're going to do is, it will have recycle carts and trash carts throughout the street fair, and they're going to be watching to see who puts things in the recycle bin. If they catch them being green and putting things in the recycle bin, they'll get a little Waste Management trinket from the student, saying, "Congratulations, thank you for being green," just to reinforce, you know, good recycling habits. So now, we'd like to recognize the students. Thank you so much for preparing certificates. We really appreciate it. They really worked hard. They got hours for community service, but they gave up every morning, for, every Friday morning, for almost two months, to come out and help do this project. So we do have a number of them here tonight, so I'd like to have them, you want me to have them come up?
Yeah, you know what? We're actually going to provide certificates. Do you also have certificates?
I don't have certificates. Do you have them?
Why don't you come up, Terry?
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much. And what we'll do, we'll go ahead and announce everyone's name, then we'll give a certificate up here. And just to let everyone know, we'll include their, their names in the, in the, in the city newsletter, The Now. I guess, how many, how many are there total here, Terry?
That are here, two, three, seven of them.
Oh, seven, okay. Oh, okay, so, all right, so why don't we do this? Let's go ahead and just call out the certificates, right?
Yes. And if I missed, well, I'll announce who I knows here.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay. Gustavo Topete? Yay, good morning, applause.
Come on up here.
Get to shake the mayor's hand, the council member's hands, take a picture. Okay, next, we have Alan Mungia. Carlos Ortiz. Arturo Rosso. Pedro Velasquez. And Kevin Tejas. Did any of the students arrive after?
Congratulations.
No, I guess this is it. Okay. And then also, we have some residents that won the challenge.
Oh, yeah, let's bring them up. That's it. Congratulations.
Okay, also, I forgot to mention that, three residents were selected to win a free month's trash service if they were caught having the recycle cart out and clean. So we, we know that two of them are supposed to be here tonight. I hope they're here. Is Julio Martinez here? Yes, no, yay, all right.
We don't have the certificates, right?
He lives on Bleecker, no, I'm sorry, on Bogart. And all three, yeah, all three weeks, he had his cart out and full of recyclables, so you're a super recycler.
Okay, Julio.
Also, is Bernardo Chavez here? Nope, he didn't show up? Okay, he lives on Baldwin Avenue. And then we had Augustine Chaka, he's not here either, but he lives on Bleecker Street. So those residents were super recyclers.
You want to take these chairs?
Yeah, I'll take those.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's get our picture. Let's get everyone in the middle. Come on. Okay, make sure I don't take my chair.
We did.
Yeah, one of them has a tentacle going down. Yes, sir.
Let's go down there.
Down there?
Oh, down there, okay, I'm on those. So, Nani mo, vamos. All right, the other one, we're going to go ahead and just leave off where, Tony's not going to be here, should we see the Hispanic word? So at this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak here, approximately three minutes. Thank you.
Mayor, real quick, I would also like to introduce Nicole, who's the new staff field rep for Assemblyman Roger Hernandez.
Oh, where's she? Thank you. Nicole, thank you for being here. Thank you. Hey, if it isn't Thomas. What's up, buddy?
Hey.
All right.
Hey, Thomas, you got a haircut?
Yeah, they got me good. A little too good. I want them to take a little off, but they took a little too much. Yeah, but it'll grow back, so that's good, right? As long as it comes back. At the, toward the end of the last meeting when we were here, I was surprised to hear that you still haven't resolved the vector control. I thought that had been taken care of years ago. I know it's been at least three years, maybe longer, maybe four. All the surrounding cities have it, and the mosquitoes are coming here and feasting on your residents here. Those mosquitoes carry, aside from malaria, they also have West Nile virus, which doesn't discriminate against the youth or the old people. They bite with a feverish. You don't want West Nile virus. You want to know somebody who had that, go talk to Robert over at the All-Star. Fritz's son had that, and had he not been a pretty good-sized guy, he might not have survived that.
That's right.
Really, really took the weight off of him. And so it's a, it's a bad thing. I don't know why the city, why wait until they vote on it to decide whether they have it? Why don't you dip into your general fund and pay for it with that, until you do vote on it citywide? These mosquitoes are feasting on your, on your residents here. They treat everywhere else around. The mosquitoes naturally come where there's no treatment, and they come to Baldwin Park. I thought this was taken care of years ago. I'm very surprised to hear that it hasn't, nothing's been done. You do other things, well, that's more important. Some of you have elderly parents. Those mosquitoes that have those things from the stagnant pools and things here in Baldwin Park, those people that have those pools like that should be cited, and the banks as well. Whoever owns that, that's allowing those things to get like that, in the end term, they could put fish in there to eat the mosquito larvae, or pour a little oil on the water's surface to kill them. That's how you deal with, with that. A little contamination in the pool, better than having the neighborhood people eaten alive by mosquitoes that carry malaria and West Nile virus. I know you're not going to answer any questions until after the fact. There were some other things that I've read about on people's blogs and things that I found. The one person in particular, I won't mention the name, but this person really bothers me, so, nothing, nobody from the city is somebody. But I was going to cover some other things, but I think I'll let that go. There's no need to revisit that. I'm just not, I guess the dentist got at me, and I'm just not in the mood today to be, you know.
Comment your time's up.
Oh, well.
All right, okay, thanks, Tom.
Three minutes went fast. I must have got started wrong.
Okay.
Well, as everyone knows, my name is Nicole Leva, and I'm the new field rep for Assemblymember Roger Hernandez. I just wanted to let everyone know that we do have some flyers for the Doherty Health Expo, Health and Wellness Expo, as well as flyers for the College Fair. And I can, whoever, wherever the best place to put on my art district, I would be happy to do stuff, so, for everybody. And I'm happy to be here, and additionally, as field rep for Assemblymember Roger Hernandez, I will be covering Baldwin Park and Almonte. So anything that you need from the Assemblymember's office, you can contact Nicole Leva. And I don't have cards right now, because I just started about a week and a half ago, but you can always call the office and ask for Nicole Leva, because there's two Nikols there, but Nicole Leva's the one, me, that will be able to assist anything in Baldwin Park or Almonte. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Margarita, good evening.
I'm just here to remind you that a light strip was approved for Ohio and Baldwin Park Boulevard, and La Rica in Los Angeles. So I just reminded you, because when it was approved, it was a different chief of police and a different CEO, so I just want, I know that they know that those things were approved, and, I mean, hopefully, they put in soon, because the school started already, and, you know, Ohio and Baldwin Park Boulevard is really dangerous for the kids that go to Santa Fe, Holland, and Geras. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Margarita. Bye, Malan. Hey, Rafael.
Good evening, Mayor Lozano, councilmembers, city staff. My name is Rafael Gonzalez. I'm the library manager at the newly refurbished Baldwin Park Library.
That's right.
I want to thank you, Mayor, for making the announcement that the Baldwin Park Library did open on September the 2nd, so I'm going to reiterate that the library is now open, has been open for two weeks, and I want to thank you, Mayor, and Councilwoman Monica Garcia, for visiting the Baldwin Park Library. The library looks awesome, beautiful. We're getting a lot of really nice comments, so members of the public, please come and visit the Baldwin Park Library. There's been major, major improvements, and Ms. Baca, Ms. Rubio, Mr. Bacheko, you're welcome to come and visit the Baldwin Park Library. We have expanded days of service, Tuesday through Saturday. New CEO, Mr. Yatsi Shannon, welcome. We did a soft opening, but among the major, major improvements, we have 42 state-of-the-art computers for adults, teens, and children. We have expanded seating area, beautiful furniture, beautiful carpeting. We have four study booths, private booths, that you can meet with your constituents, or whomever you wish to meet, and they're very, very well-used. Right now, we're averaging about 1,100, 1,200 people a day. Yesterday, if you had come, you know, come visit the library around this time, around, you know, around 6:00 o'clock on Tuesday and Wednesday. It's been really, really busy, and this is, this is the community's library, so we welcome them. You know, we welcome them, you know, to the library. Right now, there's no waiting period at computers, like it was before. The term that the public uses, you know, was worth the wait, valió la pena, is what I'm hearing. Magda, whom you know, she said, "Oh, the library smells like a new car," you know, and she says, "Oh, you went from, you know, from the Flintstones to the Jetsons." I said, "Magda?" I mean, we weren't that backwards before, but because of the number of computers and additional technology, we have iPad catalogs, and we will be circulating Kindles as well. So please, I wanted to be here, and again, just to, you know, to repeat the announcement that the mayor made, and I thank you. I thank you for your support, and look forward to seeing you at the Baldwin Park Library. There is one thing, right now, it's a challenge, of course, it's our parking lot, because it fills up very, very quickly, and potentially, curbside parking. Right now, we have a red curve, you know, of course, for the bus, but potentially, maybe some of the red curve that is there, you know, I can contact maybe Public Works, maybe could, you know, so we want to add, actually, you know, additional street parking, and I know that it's going to impact, you know, the community center, Manny. I'm sure, but, but people are parking, they're parking in the middle of our parking lot, and that is a real challenge, you know, for us. I mean, when the spaces are filled, people park in the middle, and of course, if they have a big vehicle, like an F-150, it makes it really difficult for other customers, you know, to exit. So we'll continue to explore that, and see if we can come up with a solution.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor.
Yeah, we'll work with you in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Malan with public communication.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I know he might leave, but I wanted to make sure, he said he had a soft opening, but I want to make sure that we advertise it in a big way to our community. Reading literacy is very important to our kids, and, and not all of us have internet. Not myself, but a lot of our community children don't have, you know, way of getting that information. So I'd like to collaborate with the library and have a real, like, big celebratory grand opening, where we can collaborate also with the school district, invite the officials, and really make it big. We really want our kids to know you're there, and, and encourage them to come, and I can see already, maybe giving out books, and, and so can you, Mr. Yatsi, call Mr. Rafael and see if we can coordinate something, and perhaps use some of the city resources to donate books, or pencils, or something that we can, you know, encourage the kids to come out and read? Thank you.
That would be great. Thank you. Looking forward. Had a beautiful tour. Love those nice study conference rooms that you have there.
I have one more question, I'm sorry, and this is to our Public Works, and I know that they need parking, and I was just wondering, can we use the front parking space with a sign that says, like, "Library Parking Only"? Is that possible? I know there's a lot of studies that need to be done, but, you know, so we can make sure that those parking spaces, if we are going to open them up, go to the library.
We will, we will bring something back to the city council to, I'll, I'll research it and bring something back to the council to see, to see how we can do that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. At this point, we'll continue on with the public communication. All right, Susan Nan, at this point, I will now officially, did you have some, yes, come on up to the mic. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Melinda Galvan, and the reason why I'm here is because last year, on where I live, at 3217 Robinette, the street sweeper stopped going. A month after I came, and they told me up here, they told me to go to call Public Works, nobody answered, so I talked to somebody upstairs, and they told me that the reason why they were not sweeping my street, like, every week, they were going to do it every two weeks, is because the person who swept that machine died. Well, you know, he died. They told me to wait for a couple of months, and I did. And at this time, it's still the same. Now, I call, because I receive a ticket. They told me that they were going to do it every two weeks, like, one week and skip one, and, and I told them, "Why don't you change the signs? They're going to do it like that." And they told me, "Well, we can't do it right now. We're going to do it eventually, but not now, and it's almost a year." I need to know from somebody.
All right, you know what we'll do, Mr. Wall? We'll get together with her to kind of discuss as to what's transpiring. If the, if the sign says no parking, it's definitely not parking.
I understand that, I understand that, but, you know, I think it should be equally known, we, we respect the signs, but, the streets, and that, I'm not talking about just my street, the whole city. And that side, where I live, Baldwin Park Boulevard, you know, it's a bad, and the week that they don't sweep, it looks bad, the city, not just my street, you know?
What's the address, what's the address again?
It's 3217 Robinette.
3217 Robinette.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Wall's going to speak to you, the Public Works director.
If they're not going to sweep every week, and they're going to do it, that's fine, but just change the sign, the sign.
Absolutely. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Sorry about that. All right, move on with public communication. Do you know further interest, and I'll declare the public communication closed. Councilmember Monica Garcia, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Rafael Gonzalez for your commitment, and just for, just the, you know, just everything that you put into our library. When I was younger, I spent so much time there, and it's so nice to see that we have leaders like you, who are so passionate, you know, about reading, about providing reading opportunities for our community. And so definitely want to thank you and your staff, and also Mrs. Serrano, who is part of the Friends of the Library, so definitely want to acknowledge all of you, and we welcome the opportunity to be part of, you know, the ribbon cutting ceremony or the grand opening, just to show our support. So thank you again. Mayor, I also just wanted to take the opportunity to mention, there's an item on the consent calendar, and I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself from the consent calendar vote altogether. It's item number eight, and it involves LE Fitness, and the reason why I feel like I need to recuse myself is, my former employer, Marola Maddox Properties, initiated conversations with LE Fitness back in 2007, 2008. Then, the company was acquired by Evoque Properties, who continued those conversations, and Evoque Properties recently sold, you know, the Oval Site to LE Fitness, or for the purpose of developing an LE Fitness.
Right.
And I continue to hold stock with the company, so for all of those reasons, just going to recuse myself, so excuse me.
So what'd you do? You'll, you'll actually lead the council chamber?
I'm going to leave.
Okay, that's fine.
For the consent calendar, just, just to steer clear of any issues.
That's fine. That's fine, that's fine. I guess you could go back in the back, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, before I go on, I just want to read something that we are required by state law, which is, this is, as required by the government code, section 5494.3, "Members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting, and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting." So, need to read that for everyone. Thank you, legal counsel. At this point, I will go ahead and open up, excuse me, move for consent calendar, we have pretty large ones, as a matter of fact.
I would like to pull some items, Mayor.
Okay, yes, councilmember Susan Rubio.
I want to pull number five.
Number five?
Number nine.
And number nine?
And 11.
And 11, okay. Any other council members wishing to...
May I like to pull item number eight?
Okay, number eight, one more, please. Okay. All righty, any of the council members wishing to pull any other items? Okay, if not, at this point, I will move, make a motion to move consent calendars with the exception of items number five, eight, and nine, and 11. And that is my motion.
Second.
Second, any objections? Seen none, so move. At this point, we'll go to item number five, which is requested by Susan Rubio, which is item number five, which is authorize purchase of police jail van, councilmember.
Just really quickly, I just want to make sure that every time we spend money, we try as much as we can to clarify for the audience in our constituency that this money does not impact our general fund. This is being purchased with asset forfeiture money, so just to, to make it clear that this is not an impact of the general fund. Thank you, Mayor. And with that, I motion to pass this item.
Second.
And second, by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, any objections? Seen none, so move. All right, thank you very much. At this point, we'll go to item number eight, requested by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, approval of a, of a third-party agreement between Fitness International LLC, Mig Ogden Ireland, Inc., and the City of Ballin Park for SEQA and planning-related services for proposed 45,000 square feet, LE Fitness, yeah, and 9,000 square feet retail restaurant building at 13822-13916 Garvey Avenue Oval Site. So at this point, councilmember, Vice Mayor, yes, sir?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to hold this off for another week. I didn't have, I wanted to review the item a little more so we could bring it back next week. And also, if city attorney could look into, I guess it was a conflict of interest that Monica, councilwoman, brought up, so if you could look into that and come back with a report, because I didn't find any of that.
All right, so at this point, so there's no, there's no sensitive time or anything on this particular subject, right?
It's just a, it's just a SEQA issue.
All right, so at this point, is that, you make a motion?
Yeah, motion.
Yes, oh, go ahead.
Oh, good.
Yeah, with regard to the, to the time, no, there is no specific time crunch. However, the purpose of the agreement is because the LE Fitness has asked us to expedite the processing, and therefore, they have asked us to retain a consultant to process their application. So the three-party agreement before you tonight is simply a pass-through between LE Fitness and the consultant, where the city is really, you know, to expedite the process, that's all it is.
All right, thank you.
If you have any other question, I may ask a question if you have.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this point, you make a motion?
I made a motion to hold it off until our next council meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Also to direct the...
Second by councilmember Cruz Baca, any objections? Seen none, so move. All right, at this point, we'll not...
Also, within that, there was a direction to the city attorney.
Yes, that is correct, yes, regarding Monica Garcia's voting pattern. All right, at this point, item number nine, which is requested by councilmember Susan Rubio, which is to approve the update job specification of Chief Deputy City Clerk, Economic Projects Coordinator, and Associates Planners and Establish New Salary Range for Position of Chief Deputy City Clerk. Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
At the time when we decided that we wanted to open this position, we really did talk about being able to justify spending the money in this position, and I saw the job description, so thank you so much, that's really well-done. However, one of the things that I said last time and that I wanted to focus on is having measurable, attainable and measurable goals. And I see that one of the items and the duties is to, responsible for implementation and with project timelines. However, I want to have something that we can measure. For example, I want the very first part to be, to set goals first with, and create a timeline so that we can keep track of some of the projects that this person or this individual wants to, to create. So in other words, I see the timelines here for projects, but I don't see a timeline for us, so we can measure the goals and attainment of those goals at the end of the year. So we can add that to, to this. I would like to bring it back with the revision and add that to this, thank you.
All right, thank you, councilmember Susan Rubio. So at this point, we are going to bring this particular item back. So, would you like to make an entertaining motion?
Excuse me, do you want to say something, Shannon?
I think if you would like, if you want to make a minor change, you could make a motion with that change, and if there's a second to accept it, then we could move ahead with that change.
So I'll make a motion to, to adopt this with the revisions that I just stated.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, by councilmember Cruz Baca, any objections? Seen none, so move. All right, thank you. At this point, we will now go over to item number, excuse me, to the city council consent calendar for the successor agency.
No, item 11.
11.
I missed one?
Parking restrictions.
Whoa, how did that happen? Hold on real quick. Ooh, not good, okay, yes, councilmember Susan Rubio, sorry about that. Parking restrictions for vehicles with advertising and recreational vehicles, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we've actually had a study session on this, and I just don't recall, and I want clarification. I know that we talked about big rigs and advertising these big trucks, but I'm not sure if we included campers. And the reason I say that is that in the past month or so, I've actually seen two, where, you know, we think of big recreational vehicles like big trucks or motorhomes, but I don't think we, we thought of that. And I just saw one where they've been there, and I talked to some of the neighbors, they've been there two years, and what they do is they move the car from one side of the street to the other, and it's been going on for two years, but it is a truck with the camper. Can we figure out a way to include that?
Councilmember Rubio, in, in the attached ordinance, it says housecar parking restrictions, and it says any housecar or camper on any street in this city shall not park for a period of more than two hours. So campers have been included in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted clarification on. Thank you so much, and with that, I will make a motion to, to pass this item.
I'll second.
Second, okay, second by councilmember Cruz Baca, any objections? Seen none, so move. All right, so at this point, someone could ask, councilmember Monica Garcia? Come back, all right, we're gonna go into the... Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna go into the city council acting as the successor agency of the Community Development Commission. So what we have here is the consent calendar, which is item one, the approval of resolution number SA 214-004, an amendment to the attachment of the housing assessment transfer list. Also, item number two, which is approval of recognized obligation payment schedules for the period from January 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2015, by the city council as governing body of successor agency to the Community Development Commission. So go ahead and make a motion. Oh, yes, go ahead.
I'd like to pull item...
Item which one?
One and two, just, if they could kind of give us an overview?
Sure, all right, at this point, who will give us an overview? Is that Mr. Mark?
Yeah, let me, let me just give a brief introduction on these three items, because they are all related and they are time of, is of the essence. I'll give a brief overview and then also turn it over to Mark and possibly Craig to talk about number two, the ROPS. But number one, actually, in the beginning, it goes back to the Department of Finance. When they, when these laws were passed, there was very little direction from them, and we're not even sure Department of Finance understood how these lists should be structured. So basically, we're making some amendments to our lists. Item one basically would delete three properties from the housing asset transfer list, and these properties are non-housing type of properties. Number two, which Craig might want to expand on further, is the biannual approval of the ROPS or the recognized obligation payment schedule for this period. And number three is, is basically a partner to number two, and that basically takes, it removes...
Number one? Number one.
I'm sorry, to number one, correct. It removes seven properties from the long-range property management plan because they already appear on the housing asset transfer list, and the properties should not appear on both. So this gets both our housing asset transfer list and our long-range property management plan in order to be submitted to Department of Finance for their final approval. And I, Mark, if you did want to add anything, or if there's any other questions for Mark and I on that, and Craig, if you wanted to give a brief overview or any other details on the ROPS. Just talk loud.
There you go. I'd be glad to answer any question you may have. I think the overview that Mr. Yatsi gave is pretty clear.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, on the ROPS, this is what we do every six months to comply with state law. There are no changes really from the previous ROPS, and the numbers that you see here are the same numbers that were part of the successor agency when you adopted the budget in July. So there are no significant changes in terms of our recognized obligation payments. This is just the continuation that we've had for the, the last two years, which the Department of Finance has accepted.
You just answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, councilmembers. Anything else, councilmember Ricardo Pacheco? All right, at this point, let's go ahead and move, I'll go ahead and move for approval of consent calendars, items one and two. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, any objections? Seen none, so move. All right, we'll go down to the public hearing. We have item number three, which is the approval resolution number SA 2014-002, amending the long-range property management plan for each of the real property assessed of the former Community Development Commission. So who is handling this?
I will be.
Yes, thank you, Mark.
Yeah, this item does require public hearing, and that's why it is held separate, so I'll go ahead and have Mark give a brief staff report.
Thank you, and I'm just gonna be very brief, just to remind you that those documents, the long-range property management plan was already approved by the city council back in October of 2013. After a review by the Department of Finance, there were some corrections need to be made. And really, what we have tonight is a housecleaning item where we are coordinating the properties on the property management plan as well as those on the housing asset transfer list, to make sure that there is no overlap and the two are in proper place, what it is. So what we have tonight is on the long-range property management plan, we have removed the seven properties that belong on the housing asset transfer list, and the three properties that remain are those they would not acquire back then in the 80s with non-housing funds. So those properties are non-housing funds, have nothing to do with the housing fund, and they are the ones that are remaining on the property management plan. The DOF has already indicated, the property management plan requests the DOF to approve the transfer of those properties to the city to continue the current use. The property are, one, is a power easement along Holly Street, the number two is the parking lot in front of the Terry Muse Family Center, and number three is a portion of the basketball court in Morgan Park. So we request on the DOF to transfer the property back to the city to continue the existing use. And the discussion we had so far, the DOF has verbally concurred with our request.
All right, thank you. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, on the, on this particular subject, at this point, I will entertain those that oppose. So anyone wishing to speak opposing the current proposal? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? See no interest, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. All right, so at this point, councilmembers have any questions? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for the approval of resolution number SA 2014-002, amending the long-range property management plan for each of the real property assets of the former Community Development Commission. A resolution, go to the end part, of the successor agency to the Community Development Commission of the City of Ballin Park, amending the long-range property management plan pursuant to Health and Safety Code, section 34191.5, for the deposition of real property assets of the former Community Development Commission of the City of Ballin Park. That is my motion. Hello?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All right, okay, there's a second, second by councilmember...
Somebody else was...
Thank you, that's okay. By councilmember Cruz Baca, sorry, had to say hello. All right, so at this point, see no objections, so move, but, and I believe that's what we have, so at this point, I'll move for adjournment of the city council.
I'll second.
Actually, Mayor, before we adjourn, I do want to provide a clarifying comment. I've been informed that there is a request to investigate my voting on the Oval Site, and I just want to state that whenever the item regarding the Oval Site has come up to the city council, I've always recused myself. And I've done the same even as a planning commissioner back in 2006 and 2007. Now, the real investigation might involve the DEA's office and quid pro quo that occurred regarding the Oval Site, but that would be, not, not involving me, that would be another council member. So, you know, if, if we want to start looking into any investigations, then I would direct your attention that way. But I just wanted to state very clearly that I've always recused myself when it came to the site, for the reasons that I stated above. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and...
Mayor, can I just ask, I don't think anybody asked for an investigation, right? I think it was just to look into the, the conflict. I don't think it was an investigation just to bring back information, to be informed, but thank you.
Yeah, there was no, it, it just, you, you brought this up sort of at the last minute, I just want to know what, what exactly, what is it that you're talking about, that, that there's a conflict of interest that you couldn't vote on this item? And I don't have enough information from what you've said, I mean, it was just kind of brought up, you know, briefly, there's nothing in the staff report. So I just want to know what it is you're talking about when you say I can't vote because my employers were involved and, and although there's been a change of ownership, so I'm not clear what it is you're talking about.
There has been a change of ownership, however, I maintain stock with the previous companies.
Okay.
And Evoque Properties recently sold their Oval Site for this, the purpose of this development. The conversations have been going on for several years. For this reason, I recused myself, so that there wouldn't be a conflict of interest. And in previous conversations regarding the Oval Site, I've always recused myself for the same reasons, just to avoid any conflict of interest.
Okay, because I don't have that information, you're bringing it here, I'm, I'm just asking them to, staff to write a report so I'm clear on what it is you're talking about, but I don't think it's appropriate for you to start making false accusations and bringing up issues. If you have something that you think you need to bring forth, you bring it up. I mean, there's nothing to hide here. But having said that, I mean, I guess we're done with this issue, so we'll move forward before the meeting ends here. I just wanted to have staff look at, there's a number of, of notices that come from different water agencies about the drought that's coming up or that we're, we're in right now. So I want to make sure that the city is using all the forms that we have available to talk about the drought, and that includes our utility bills, we're able to advertise through there, our billboards, we're able to advertise, you know, on those about the drought. Of course, the NOW are at the park where we're able to do it. So any way that we can get the word out about the drought, I think it's important that we're able to do that. And I did read some information about, well, through our news agencies, that the, the Southern California is starting to use a little bit less water, at least all the users of water, so we want to continue to keep that trend as we go into this drought and it gets worse and worse. Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to add something to that, so that Mr. Wall can probably look into it. We, somehow, we need to, and I'm reiterating what councilmember Pacheco said, a lot of the area where I live are a lot of seniors that own their homes, and it seems like they're not aware of what time they can water. You know, a lot of them want to keep their gardens looking very nice. There have been a couple of instances where code enforcement, and they were a little rough on the people. I think that they could be a little nicer in order to explain to them that it's from 9:00 to 6:00, right, that they can't water from 9:00 in the morning until 6:00 in the evening, and then after that or before that, yeah. And if you could please sort of check in that, because they are people that probably